Thanks for coming, everybody. The Congress committee is just sitting in the restroom and getting inside where you're backed up here in Owigo and Horseheads before that doing town hall meetings. I really appreciate everybody commenting on our move as everybody can tell we have a large crowd. And we're gonna try to work through as many of, uh, I'm told we have well over 100 written questions, so we're gonna work through as many as we can.
What about the non-written?
Well, what we try to do, because what tends to happen sometimes if you, some folks tend to be a little louder, some folks tend to be a little quieter. So we try to get people that are quiet, their questions matter just much to everybody else's. So we're gonna work through the written ones. Every town hall meeting we've ever had has turned into a conversation as well. We've done well over 80 of these. So we're gonna try and accommodate as many questions as we can, work through them. If, the reason we do the written questions is so that if we don't have time to get to your question, we can then get you an answer in writing.
My chance, Joe.
Alright.
Alright. Well, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it. Thanks, Joe. Before we get started, if we could all stand and say the pleasure, we'll be led.
Like us to your left.
The great is gonna lead us here today.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Alright, thank you.
Next to doors are to your right, your back left, men's room, ladies' room. Congressman Tom Reed.
Well, thank you very much, Randy, for introducing us. And a couple housekeeping measures. Ever since Gabby Gifford's situation, we point out the exits at all of our town halls. So I think we have exits back in the back and over here to the right, so everyone feel comfortable. Everything is hopefully not gonna be an issue, and I don't anticipate that, so just go over those little things. First of all, I wanna thank the village for hosting us.
No problem.
This is great. This is our first trip in our town halls. We've been doing these on a regular basis now for, since day one. And this is our first trip into Tompkins County. And I so appreciate all you coming out to be with us today. That is great. We started this morning at 8 o'clock over in Horseheads. We went to Owigo in Appalakin, and now we're here today, and we're going up to Seneca Falls. Anybody wants to go with us? Maybe the Boy Scouts can go with us? Come on with us, we're going up to Seneca Falls before we end the night back in Corning. So, Joe went over the housekeeping measures. Maybe just briefly, kind of an update, what we generally do before we get into a conversation is what's, what's on the plate of Washington DC right now. First, gun control seems to be a debate that's generated a lot of interest. We've been getting a lot of calls in the office in regards to it. New York State took its action that it took here a few weeks ago. And Washington right now, I say, okay? Appreciate that. Appreciate that. And we're, (laugh) got a counterpoint. And that's good, that's what it's all about. That's why we do these. We are gonna have a conversation and get into those issues. In Washington, it seems to be the gun control debate is in the senate, and that's the body to be keeping an eye on if you're interested in that issue. I think that is gonna be the tell as to what happens in regards to the gun control debate going forward. With me, you know my position, probably many of you. I believe in the Second Amendment. I believe it's a constitutional fundamental freedom. I am very interested in dealing with the issue of violence in our schools, violence in our community, and violence in our society. I would be very eager to work with anybody when it comes to the mental health issues facing America. And we're gonna look at policies that empower our teachers, our mental health providers, our law enforcement, get the resources, now that that's a battle in and of itself. Because as we deal with the fiscal crisis, the debt crisis, we gotta have the question of priorities. And so as we go forward, we wanna make sure that the, the mental health component of this issue, I think should be foremost in our mind. The other issue is the culture of violence. Now, I don't know if we can do a lot on the legislative agenda in regards to that, but I can assure you, we have done things already in our office. Like we went to Waverly High School the other day, we went to Big Flats Elementary, met with fourth graders, to try to get the issue of violence in our society out in the forefront and try to say, "We're not gonna glorify violence any longer." It, it's something that's not acceptable. Bullying, for example, not acceptable. And we're gonna be a voice, try to be, use the office, if you would, to get out and talk to people and say, "We gotta stop this promotion of violence in our society." So that's kinda summary where we're at on that issue. The other issue that's getting a lot of attention lately is the issue of immigration reform. That is something new, to be perfectly honest with you. When I came home about a week ago for this week in the district, before I left, people really weren't talking about immigration reform. I mean, they were talking about it kinda indirectly, but I think there's a new traction to the issue over the last week and a half. And so I'm interested in seeing where we're at when we go back to Washington on Mon, on Monday. In regards to immigration, I'm very interested in supporting immigration reform, especially in regards to the district issues that we have in the agricultural community, our guest worker statutes. Also, with our higher educational institutions throughout the district, very interested in reforms that are gonna take care of the H-1B situation and make sure that we have the tools necessary to not educate so many kids that we've educated, and at the end of the time, we give them a degree, and we also give them a, kind of a pass to get kicked out of the country. So we gotta improve that. So those two issues are very important to me, and will continue to be passionate in trying to do that.
What is the H-1B? What is that?
H-1B is a student visa type program. It's for higher educational institutions and things like that. So, that's developing as we speak. Now, I came here to listen to you. Just wanted to give you kinda that 20 seconds, so update, more than 20 seconds, I'm a politician, I guess, but...
Joe, we have a lot of questions. The questions start here, and they go, it's here. But, the single largest topic is hydraulic fracking, which is not uncommon. And so, this section of the table, so I know it's fracking. But, something that I think is indicative of some of the other questions. Do you support the home rule right of driving to ban fracking in our town?
We just got a question on that as we're walking in the door. I am a firm believer in First and Tenth Amendment, plus the municipal home rules of our New York State's way of governing. So that means that the lawsuit that, is my understanding that's proceeding, is a question of whether that municipal home rule authority is there for the local municipalities. I support that. I support the ability of, I believe governments that are closest to the people govern best, and therefore, we'll see how that unfolds in the court, but generally that philosophy is where we're, where we're at. Does that answer the question? I think we answered it twice, I think.
I asked that question, the second part was, would you announce your support as an amicus brief or any other way to the court for your position on that?
To intervene in the court or the advisory memo?
Not as an intervener, just as a...
This is a friend of the court?
Other politicians in the state have done that.
Oh, have they?
Yes.
Who's done that, around the state?
Barbara Lipton.
Oh, okay.
Ed Fingers.
Okay. Well, I'll take it under advisement, I appreciate that, and let's see, let's see where we're at with that. We've never done that before for any other legal case. I do believe letting the process, the judicial system, take its course, but I appreciate that suggestion.
This is one that comes up quite a bit. Do you think that the fracking industry should remain exempt from the Clean Air and Drinking Water Acts?
Ah, well, I think you all know my position. We, we had an election, a lot of people know where we're at on this issue.
No, we don't.
Okay. Okay.
You never came to Tompkins County.
Oh, I did, many a times.
But we don't know your position.
Okay. Well, that's why we're here, so I, I will say. I am not a believer in expanding federal government. I believe we have to downsize federal government. And what we're on a path here, by doing that, is I think expanding government. Do I believe the issues that you're expressing that you're concerned about in regards to the disclosure of fluid, the issues that are associated with hydraulic fracturing? I believe that the state is in the position to regulate those and take care of those issues. I'm not a believer in duplicating the efforts on local, state, federal level. So I would defer to the state, I would defer to the local bodies in regards to the regulations. So hopefully that answers your question.
Water and air are across state borders.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate that, and we're gonna agree to disagree on a lot of this issue.
Where did your $126,000 of gas company money come from? Which lobbyists and gas companies besides?
No idea.
Chesapeake and the other lobbyists.
No idea. We don't keep track of that, I don't keep track of that. I know people use that as an issue, as to, somehow that's what brought me to my conclusions on these issues. I have had these, I've looked at this issue for many a times, many a years. That's based on the things that I've done, the things I've researched, the positions I've taken on are based on my independent taking input from people. Just as there's so many, there's many people here that are opposed to fracking. I can assure you across the state, across the district, there are a lot of people that have the opposite opinion. And as a member of Congress, that's one of the things I wrestle with. I honestly will tell you that. I represent 700,000 people. That means there is no way that I'm going to be able to agree with 700,000 people. So we do the best we can, and, but what I promise you, I will tell you what my positions are. I am tired of elected officials, and I was with one, and I just shared the story down in Owigo. I was with a member of Congress, went to one side of his district, it wasn't on the fracking issue, it was on a different issue, took a position. Six hours later, on the other side of his district, took a diametrically opposed position in front of the group when it was there, because it was a different environment. I was appalled. Now, that individual is no longer a member of Congress, and rightfully so. I'm tired of that. So we will tell you where we stand. Doesn't mean I can't be convinced, doesn't mean I won't do the research, doesn't mean I'm not gonna come back to Tompkins County, 'cause we disagree in this room with a lot of people on the issue of fracking and natural gas development. We're gonna keep coming. Because there's more that we can agree on, in my opinion, than we disagree on. And so that's where we're looking to find that common ground.
In your answer about the Cheney loophole and the Clean Air and Water Act, would you extend that to say that we should abolish the EPA?
No. I think there's some reasonable interstate issues that the EPA has a role in. I think we made some great headway with the Clean Air Act and the Clean Water Act. Where we were back in the 60s, even before I was born, and where we are today is tremendous, and in a tremendous improvement. And I so appreciate that, that question. Because I think what you're gonna find in me is, we need to protect our environment. There's no doubt about that. This is my home, this is where I've lived all my life, this is where I grew up, grew up, this is where I'm raising my kids, Autumn and Will are 12 and 14. We got a place on Cuba Lake that's been in our family since 1944. We don't, no one's talking about destroying our environment. I'm not. What I'm talking about, and there was a friend of mine, Mark Crits, he's a Democrat from Pennsylvania, co-chair of the Marcellus Yale Caucus with me, and he grew up in coal country. And what he talked about quite a bit with me was, "We're not going back to the era of orange guys, orange water. That, that's, that's our history. What we're doing is recognizing the success we've had in regards to the Clean Air and Clean Water Act. And let's have a conversation of, do, how much more, how much further do we have to go?" And I raised that, because at the same time I was having that conversation, we were also talking about things in the cement industry, boiler industry, in regards to Boiler MACT and Cement MACT, the maximum tangible control technology standards. And what I was finding, when I talked to the folks like over at EPA and other folks, they were trying to get to a zero emission standard, for example, on boilers. And it was amazing to me, because we had already cleaned up something like 97% of the issue, 90% of the emissions. And they didn't even have the technology to measure from 97 to 100, but yet they were going to require it. To me, there, there has to be a reasonableness in this conversation. And how are you gonna require something that you don't even have the technology to demonstrate? And how are you going to say to go from 97% to 100% of a controlled status? How does that, what return on that do you get in regards to health and safety issues, in regards to what you're gonna do to the industry? What you're gonna do to Cornell University? In regards to the boiler retrofit, retrofits they would have to do, and things like that? Hospitals that would have to comply with it? So in that conversation that I was having with Mark, we're having in the backdrop of that conversation, and to me, that's my approach to things, I try to be reasonable.
But Halliburton makes it zero, zero control over air and water emissions for oil and gas. That doesn't seem fair or reasonable either.
So the question, the exemption gives Halliburton zero emission standards?
They don't have to meet any standard.
So, let me ask you this question, to kinda illustrate my point, and I wanna have this conversation. If the state required it, in the DEC, would that accomplish the issue?
I've read the regulations that are proposed, they don't deal with that issue, so under the current circumstances, no, it doesn't help.
Okay. So this is where we can work together. So if the regulations had that in the DEC, and had those control mechanisms and those emission standards and Clean Water Act-like provisions?
That would be better than the current situation where nobody is controlling or putting reasonable standards in place.
And that's where I think we can work together on. I think there's some common ground there that we can work together on.
But that wouldn't cover all 49 other states, and the fact that there are all these chemicals used in fracking that are guarded by the federal government as hazardous when they're used anywhere else for anything else.
But there are 49 other state governments that can do that.
I know, but it's, it's, it ain't gonna happen in a lot of places.
That's why there's, there are regulations in the EPA specific document. They did that so that it would be universal, and it would be fair to all the states. As it is now, it's not fair to all the states. Some states don't have the actual political ability to govern this sort of thing, whereas the federal government did, and they said, the federal government said, "That's why they developed the Clean Air and Clean Water Act, was developed specifically to regulate this sort of thing." And it's been taken away, because it was bought out by the whole Cheney bill that undermined the whole process of the Clean Air and Clean Water Act.
Well, I appreciate that. And one thing I would offer into this conversation is, what happens, because some people have advocated for this, and they want the EPA and the federal government to have the authority to, to regulate across the natural gas industry. What, what, what would happen if, and because President Obama's come out with the administrative position on developing natural gas as part of our energy policy, how would you feel if they preempted the local control like they did under the Telecommunications Act with the siting of cell towers and things like that? And I raised that just as a thought process, that I've thought about. Because if the federal government, if you're asking the federal government to do more, what happens if the federal government steps in and disagrees with your position and says, "You know what? We're gonna preempt the field, and you're not gonna have any local control," like they did in the Telecommunications Act, I think that was in the late 90s? That is something we have to think about as we go forward.
Mr. Reed, I think your answer is heavily influenced by the Republican standard anti-regulation ideology.
Good. That's a fair point, I mean, just so we're clear, I mean, I am a Republican, I am a conservative in my heart, I'm not gonna come here and try to be something I'm not. That is what my upbringing taught me, that's what I believe in.
I understand that if you're busy saying that the states do it, you're saying, you're taking the federal government and its responsibilities to all of the country off the hook, and that seems disingenuous.
Well, I appreciate, and that's the counterpoint. The states create the federal government, period. It should be the states governing, not the federal government. That's how this country was set up. A collective of self-governing states. That's how it's set up. Next question.
The issues in regards to clean air and clean water relative to fracking aside, the biggest issue, environmental issue that this nation and this planet are facing right now are global warming. Over the next 20 years, natural gas is actually gonna cause more global warming than coal. It's, it's going to, it is, it is 100 times more potent than coal as a, as a factor contributing to global warming, and research...
That is a flawed scientific study.
It is not flawed, and there have been, there have been several studies...
Several universities have already disproved those theories.
Excuse me, I'm speaking right now.
She has the floor, she has the floor.
And so I'd like to know what you're doing to address global warming issues, and in particular, what you're going to do to ensure that we don't move forward to a natural gas-based economy that is going to cook this planet.
Okay. Well, on the last point, I think we're gonna have to agree to disagree in regards to, I am a believer in a comprehensive energy policy that leads to the alternative and renewable end state where you have an endless supply of energy. That, that has to be the goal.
Over what time period?
As soon as possible. As to how that goes and how we get there, that's why I would hope we could develop a comprehensive energy policy to do that. But at the meantime, we need a short and midterm policy to govern as we go forward. Because that's not gonna happen tomorrow.
What's your short and midterm policy, and how long will it take?
That's where, in the short term, the natural gas conversion, the natural gas...
For how long?
As long as the technology is evolving, that's where we can't take the eye off the ball of having the end goal.
We have 20 years to turn this around.
What's that?
We have 20, 20 years to turn this around.
And that's where, developing that comprehensive energy policy is so needed.
And so what's your vision of a comprehensive energy policy?
Is, is all of the above. It's fossil fuels, it's the alternatives, it's the renewables, it's things like the laser fusion.
That's not a plan, those are labels. What's a specific plan of what percentage of...
That's where we have to develop it, as a country.
Well, I'm asking you, what's your plan?
Yeah. That's where we have to, I don't have a magic plan that I can roll out here and say, "Here you go."
Great, you've got a plan for other things, why don't you have a plan for this?
What's your plan?
Alright.
What's your plan?
I appreciate your input, and we'll move on.
I would like to get to some of those, we have a large number of written questions, I'm not moving off fracking, just moving to some of the elements of it. Ed asks, "You stress a comprehensive domestic energy plan to lower energy prices. How will high-volume hydro fracking lower energy prices if we start liquefying natural gas and shipping it overseas? Where do you stand on this issue?"
Export issue, who asked the question?
Ed.
Ed. Well, you had a name on that, this one was Ed. Alright, Ed. You are touching on a very good, good issue that we're faced with right now. I am supportive of an export of natural gas with some caveats. And this is where I'm working on some policy right now that I would love to have your thoughts on. One, obviously, the reason why I support exports, let's back it up. The reason why I support exports is because if we provide that resource to other countries, that means money's coming to America. And I liken it to the Saudi Arabia situation. You know, Saudi Arabia is a mass exporter of oil and other resources. They have a tremendous amount of revenue coming into their country. We have a backward, upside-down situation right now. And I'm very interested in changing that dynamic, so that we can get capital in America, and we can start deploying that capital into our private economy and growing the economy. The issue of exports that I see is that we're gonna service, to a large extent, the domestic market. And I, and I got the interplays of where gas prices are, why they're searching the exports and going overseas, and everything else. The policy initiative that I would like to roll out here today, or have been kinda toying with over the last few weeks, is coming up with a mechanism to tax that export by non-Americans. By that, what I mean is where that export goes, those citizens of those countries pay a fee. That fee comes to us in America, and what I would like to do with that fee is invest it in our infrastructure. In our water, our sewer, our highways, our natural gas pipeline distribution systems, so that we're using non-American taxpayer dollars to rebuild our infrastructure, or at least contributing to that. Does anyone, you seem to know, you have some input on this issue, does, you see that working or not working?
I think that, I think the infrastructure is very important, but I think there's another element, and we also need other energy sources. And if we don't, we're all gonna run out of petroleum-based energy, and then we're gonna be stuck. High energy prices and nothing to, to take its place.
And I wholeheartedly, I agree with you. And that's where, one of my concerns about natural gas right now, it is at record low levels, and some people think...
You mean the price?
The price, the price of natural gas. Is at record low levels, and they think that's gonna be the panacea for the next, forever. It's not. And that's where we cannot take the eye off the ball of looking at that long-term vision of alternatives and renewables. And that's what I wanna work for. And, but in the meantime, thank you. But in the meantime, we have to have, we're still gonna be dealing with this hydrocarbon-based economy in America, and we're still gonna have the needs for power, we're gonna still have the needs to fuel our vehicles. You know, you switch the vehicles over to natural gas, that's something that is of, of interest to me.
I do have a question about how, how we get there. Do you support federal subsidies for solar and wind power, given that oil and gas companies receive similar subsidies?
This is great. We testified in front of the, we're on the Ways and Means Committee, and we testified before the Ways and Means Committee, we were having an issue in regards to tax policy as we go through comprehensive tax reform. And I was then on the panel that was talking about energy subsidies, so to speak. We are supportive, I am supportive of the production tax credits, for example, for wind. I am supportive of the renewables. The reason why, and this was what I offered in the testimony, is that when you deal with energy, it has a national security tied to it. Our dependence on foreign oil has national security implications. And the more that we can become independent, I am willing to consider that as appropriate expenditure of taxpayer dollars, because it ties to national security. And so you're gonna find that we are supportive of those types of initiatives in the tax code in particular, such as the production tax credit. And I believe that's a correct policy before.
So, I'm gonna bring up an issue that can help with energy independence in the United States. Right now hemp is illegal. The production of hemp in the United States is illegal, and it's illegal for a stupid reason, it's classified as a drug. Hemp is not a drug, and it is something that we import into this country all the time for food and for fabric and for fuel and lotions and all kinds of things. What's your position on legalizing hemp?
You know, that is a...
Repeat the question.
The question is, one of the issues that could lead to energy independence or contribute to our, our plan and policy of becoming energy independent, is to use a resource of hemp and legalizing it. To me, that makes some sense, that makes some sense. You know, I was just on a farm yesterday in Chautauqua County, we've been traveling all over the district, went through a blizzard to get out there, and we saw, 20 miles back, we saw, you know, willow that was being grown, packaged, and sent up to the facility up in Watertown, that's a biomass facility. Very supportive, I wanted to go see that firsthand, and it was a great experience to see that in action. So, let's, let's talk, it sounds like, I don't know if there's any provisions, if there's any bills out there, I think, wasn't, wasn't Dennis Kucinich?
Kucinich introduced the bill. There's been bills introduced into both the senate and into Congress for the last 13 years, and, and no one has supported them. And, I mean, you have one or two people supporting them, but this is an economic issue, this is not a drug issue.
It's an agricultural issue.
It's an agricultural issue, and we could be raising hemp right here in Tompkins County and putting our farmers back to work, instead of having these gasmen come in and make all kinds of promises, and then leave their land a weed mess.
Yeah, the biomass, the biomass industry is amazing. I mean, there are amazing opportunities out there. One thing we asked the Department of Transportation to do, it was a bill we dropped and we're gonna have to re-drop it because they didn't get to it, is there's about 100 million acres of fallow land in our highway right-ofaways across America, especially out in the west area. And it really, it's a cost factor, because we have to maintain it, we have to mow it, we have to protect it, we have to do some other things. I'm asking them to come up with a study, why don't we develop, see what the economic use of that could be, recognizing the safety concerns and all that. One of the things I was thinking of, 100 million acres is a lot of acreage to develop some biomass stock products. And that is something I think that could, should be looked at. So we're trying to get creative today. And then use the money from that, just so we're, 'cause what I'd like to do is, we need to create new revenue lines, use the money from that biomass, this 100 million acres, for example, and dedicate it to our infrastructure needs. So that's where we're trying to do that.
Say Wyoming's already doing it.
Wyoming's already doing it, that's great, I appreciate that. I was not aware of that. So we'll look at what, what are they doing in their right-ofways?
They're allowing the local ranchers, farmers to use that as acreage to increase their production.
Nice, nice. See, this, this is common sense. Production of...
Feed and hay.
Feed and hay. Perfect. I mean, that's another use of it, that would be, take it off a cost factor, and they're getting revenue from it, from the ranchers. Makes sense to me.
Speaking of agriculture, do you worry about the effects of fracking specifically on agriculture? Obviously, viticulture is huge in this particular area.
Absolutely, I mean, the, the environmental threats, of course, yes. I mean, that's why we believe in making sure it's done safely, making sure it's done responsibly. Also, you're touching on, when you're talking about essentially the wine industry there, we have also been supportive, just so you're aware, and I don't know if this has gotten out there, of exempting out the Finger Lakes under the New York State regulations. We've been supportive of that, we have communicated that to the governor's office. Not maybe for the reason you think, because of the threat to the aquifer, that is not my concern as much. It is because of that wine industry, because of the traffic impacts, the secondary impacts of how that's going to impact the uniqueness of the Finger Lakes and the wine industry and the tourism industry that's grown up around it. So.
What's, what's your opinion of the Finger Lakes?
What's that?
New York State is, as you need, don't single out the Finger Lakes region, it's beautiful, it's the whole state needs protected.
But his job is the Finger Lakes.
Yeah, and, and also, understand, that's why exempting it is not for the reason that you're saying that it shouldn't be allowed in New York. You're, you're saying, I'm taking it, you're saying it shouldn't be allowed in New York as of the threat to the aquifer and the water source. The Finger Lakes to me is also had that uniqueness of the tourism and the, the wine industry.
I have a fiscal question.
Okay, oh man, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Are you familiar with the Amgen Biotech company?
Amgen Biotech, yeah, there was some, something in the extenders package.
They just found $753 million for a felony offense.
Not for another.
And yet attached to the, the fiscal bill, Orrin Hatch, Mitch McConnell, and Max. Did a backdoor deal to put a loophole in the fiscal bill that's going to let this company be exempt from Medicare regulations and getting billions of dollars over the next two years. And that fine that they were leveled on is going to be paid by the taxpayers until the $200,000, $500,000 are going to be made on this. Peter Welch, the Vermont senator.
Yeah, no Peter.
Is going to put a bill before Congress to get this loophole rescinded. Are you going to support him in that?
Well, I am aware of the fiscal cliff bill, and we voted yes on that, the extenders that were put in there, they're tax extenders is what you're referring to, not aware of the fine situation, where they're going to indemnify Amgen. I read that, I didn't see that language in the bill.
I think that letting Amgen postpone the introduction of some generic drug will somehow promote the sale of special drugs that Amgen makes, that are supposed to be reduced in price under the original Obama legislation, and now they're going to change that, so Amgen's going to make a lot of money in the future, I'm saying, selling these drugs. And she's complaining that they're bad guys because they just got fined, and here we're giving them the right to sell this, I forgot what the drug is.
Picking dialysis.
They're extending, that's right, it's a dialysis drug.
Okay.
They're extending their monopoly on that dialysis drug. X use, which will make billions of dollars even though they've just been fined a puny 500 million.
Okay, so it's not an indemnification waiver of the federal. Okay, because I wasn't aware of that.
It was a loophole in putting the fiscal cliff bill.
And.
So why don't we attach these loopholes to bill?
I'm so glad you asked that. It's so frustrating, so frustrating to me, because remember how the fiscal cliff bill was put together? Essentially, the House said, we were going to put Plan B together, we were going to try to go with that, the millionaire level and all that stuff. That didn't come to be, there was many of us, I was one of them, did not want to see taxes go up on 100% of Americans in a time and economically.
We knew that was coming.
What's that?
Come on, you're not fooling any of us, we knew that was coming.
What, the taxes on everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
We knew that was coming, we're not, we're not ignorant, she's.
Okay, no, I understand that, but we, we did, the income taxes is what we were talking about. No, you're referring to the payroll tax.
It's all the same, money coming out of you, money coming out of you.
And that is where, okay, so we were, we were worried, I was worried about those taxes going up even further, the expiration of the payroll tax rates and the income tax rates. All the rates were, were scheduled to go up. So at the end of the year, we said, Senate, tell us what you can do, tell us what you can do. And they packaged the whole package together, and the extenders were still part of that conversation in the bill that came over. Why they did it, because I think they saw it as it's a must-pass piece of legislation. They don't want to go through the regular order of debating the policy, whether or not that tax policy is good policy or bad policy. And it was in the bill that was packaged together, sent over to us in the House. I was hopeful that they wouldn't get into those issues. I was hopeful they were just going to deal with the fiscal issue. I was hopeful they were going to also address some of the spending issues that are in Washington DC. They didn't. And so what came before me at the 12 o'clock midnight deadline was a bill that I said, all I can do is limit those income tax rate increases from going up. And we supported that. And we said, we're not going to let that happen. And that's why we did. The other thing that was critical in that bill, this as an aside, is we did it on a permanent basis. And what that did is also take care of the alternative minimum tax that was expanding, it was originally a provision that was put into law years ago to target 116 people, that was now getting up to millions of American families that were getting hit with that alternative minimum tax, and it was, it's a problem that kept on growing. We got rid of that permanently. So we were in, supportive of that. Do I wish the payroll tax would have been included in there? Yeah, I'm a firm believer, just so you know my philosophy, letting people keep their money to the extent that they can.
And destroy Social Security, that's what it's doing.
Could you answer the Amgen question?
Amgen, that tax policy, I believe that is a whole.
Don't worry about that.
The loopholes and the special interest exemptions, that's why I've been supportive of a comprehensive tax reform, those need to be repealed, they need to be wiped clean, we need a comprehensive tax policy reform that focuses on treating everybody. No picking winners and losers in Washington DC, except for some areas like we were talking about, national security in the energy fields, that's a national security question.
So, so you think because there isn't a national policy, we should ignore subsidies that rip us off, that are not in the common, for the Commonwealth there, like this subsidy to Amgen, and that make a joke out of what you call the free-market philosophy in our capital system? Why can't you take a stand against a particular abuse? Because there's no comprehensive policy does not prevent you from standing up for the people in this district and this country.
And we're, and we're opposed to those types of special interest provisions, such as what this Amgen provision is referring to. And what we should be working towards is a comprehensive reform of our tax code. We can take on the fights, individual fights, I can drop a bill, and we could, I mean, and we have done some of those things. And take them one by one so people know where I stand, but that one individual bill, probably not going to get picked up and made into law, just so, and a lot of that stuff is done for political fodder, so it can come back and tell you what you want to hear.
The unconstitutional ones give a law.
That's the going rate today. My question earlier was, is can we get past the fracking and get to the real pink elephant of this nation? And that's the gun control. The unconstitutional disarmament of the American people. Can we hit the nail on the head?
The number one issue was fracking, but we did have, number two was, was gun control. So if, we have every which way you can shape it, but Brad's Tom, your position on the second amendment.
Let's go with the guns, I've been three years tall talking about, hold on, what chemicals are in there? Well, let's list all 100 of them now.
Let's, that's what we're going to do, we're going to.
All 100? You're going to list, do you know 10 of them? I don't.
Okay, so the gun, so we're going to move on to the gun control issue.
It's your game, it's yours.
Well, I came here to listen to you, that's why we're trying to take the most common themes of the question.
That would, that would be the most common.
There's a variety of questions ranging from the assault weapons ban proposed by Obama, the safe act done with New York State and.
The unsafe act in New York?
So if you could touch on.
They're gun control, ma's. 42 dead in four weeks. Give the man the microphone.
Okay. Ma'am, new voice.
I just have a question before gun control takes, but it has to do with violence in society. Last week, we finally achieved amazingly, 60 senators committed themselves to passing the violence, to reenacting the Violence Against Women Act. I think everyone here can agree that violence against women is something that should be eliminated. I was very distressed at your last, at the last Congress refusing to take it up, I think because of the hazard rule. And I think the problems were, in your House, there were enough senators to pass it, was the, one of the problems was the extension of protection to Native American women who suffered tremendous violence on the reservation. And you represent Seneca Falls, which is really a sacred place, and I would really like you publicly, in the record, to get leadership so we can get that Violence Against Women Act passed yesterday, and I'd like to hear your whole.
We support the Violence Against Women Act.
There hasn't been a vote in your House.
No, there was a House bill.
I know.
That we voted for.
But it diminished it rather than.
Yeah, and that was the exact problem. There was a drafting issue and some people, that was the whole issue as to why it's going to become law. I'm new to Washington, the, the rules and the bureaucracy and how that happens and why that doesn't allow it to move forward is something we're learning and we're trying to figure out ways to get around that, as we go forward. But I am 100% committed to that act, the Violence Against Women Act. And we're, and, just so we're all clear, there's nobody in Washington that I've come across, Republican, Conservative, Democrat, whatever, that is saying, we need to support violence against women. And, and that's, and, and that's, that's what's mind-boggling to me. And, and it's, and I've had people come, Louise Schlatter, I love her, I was on Rules Committee with her. I went up to her after, she said, you know what these freshman Republicans are here to do? They're here to kill women. That's not what we're, that's not what, I didn't go to Washington to do that. That, that just, that does, I went to Louise, I said, what is that contributing to this debate? And we have to stop that. And so I'm, I'm with you on the Violence Against Women Act, let's see what we can do to figure out where that language issue is and what has to be cleaned up, whatever that is, I don't know what that is right now.
If you could simply adopt and pass the Senate bill, they've done the work, 60 senators, Republicans and Democrats.
Have you argued?
That's a good start.
Have you argued in your conference that it should be brought to the floor for a vote? Allow all Congress people to, to vote their conscience and not require leadership to tell them how to vote. And if that happens, how will you vote?
Yeah, well, and that's where the Violence Against Women Act, that did come to the floor, we voted in favor of it.
No, we're talking about all women, it includes Native American women, it includes gay women, immigrants, it's all women.
And, and we got a lot of support, which we hang up, and I've worked together, we're working on this to get this taken care of. Why are you taking it up the floor? I don't know, we talked to leadership, why are they going to bring it up the floor? I don't know. Other than they give some bureaucratic answer as to why we had to go back to the committee to redraft the language and all that stuff. To me, it didn't make any sense, and we'll be supportive of it.
But this matters to us, and, and I hope you'll come back with a better answer next time.
Well, and I appreciate that, I mean, and I'll tell you that I'm going to try to do the best I can to make sure that we put pressure to get it to the floor.
The Republican Conference has not allowed it to go through, and it's one reason why I think the Republican, your conference has, we can all acknowledge the reasons, a problem with women. When your conference doesn't allow the Violence Against Women Act to be voted on, words mean nothing but that act was.
And that's where. That, that decision, that, that, why did that happen?
Action.
And I appreciate that.
If you move on to the gun control, which is just as we have a few of these. Sort of an indicative question. I'm a farmer, a hunter, and a gun owner. How is that? However, I fully support the New York gun control law. Why not support federal legislation?
Wow, wow, it's a joke, doesn't matter.
Well, I appreciate.
Here's the New York State gun control law. They're all the same. That's all it is, is what it looks like, not what it actually does.
As I said?
Secure the schools and make, protect the schools, don't punish the innocent.
Hold on, hold on, you're going to have to let him, let him ask. My position, as I said in the introductory remarks on the issue, is I believe in the Second Amendment, I believe it's an individual constitutional fundamental right. Now, where I want to take the debate, so, and we could discuss that all day long, we're going to disagree on that, obviously. But where we could go in regards to guns, let's just take the guns first, then we'll get into the mental health issues. Things like individuals, bad guys committing crimes with guns, I am strongly in support of enhanced penalties for people who do that, mandatory imprisonment terms.
If they kill themselves, what the hell?
The last thing they do is shoot themselves, and what the hell is a penalty?
What I'm, what I'm talking about is areas on guns that we're supportive of, I'm just trying to articulate my position and be as clear as I can with each and every, everyone here today.
What about background checks?
Background checks, that is, I think, a state issue that could be dealt with. And hopefully, you know, identifying people, and that's where the mental health component of this comes in, identifying people with mental health issues and saying, you shouldn't get a weapon because of that documented situation, that's a reasonable regulation that we can consider. But outright bans, just, just so we're, just so we're clear, outright bans, I'm not going to be supportive of. Because I don't believe they move to the issue at hand.
The bogus, that's a bogus.
What, what's the difference?
No one is asking for an outright ban. Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
We want more control.
There it is, right there, an outright ban. And it's all the same song. Assault weapons is not, is a missile, it's all the same.
There are people that are, don't know what you're talking about. So what I'm trying to articulate, let's get a new voice back here.
I'm a veteran from Vietnam, I was a combatant every time. I'd like to know how a flash suppressor and a bayonet lock and maybe even a pistol grip makes a weapon more deadly. If that were the case, the Vietcong would have been really afraid of us.
A lot of people would get banned, evidently.
I'm just, I'm just curious, I gotta ask, I wasn't in Vietnam, but would we all feel safer if everybody had an automatic weapon in this room right now?
Yes, I would. Yes, I would.
You would feel better if everybody here were armed with a semi-automatic?
Yeah, my federal government.
You would feel safer.
They just issued a declaration of war.
You want background checks? Oh, good.
The federal government requires it out of sale of every firearm.
Not a gun.
All right, let's have someone new, let's have someone new engage in the conversation, sir.
Would you support, given the fact that we all drive, we all have liability insurance for, which we purchase for our vehicles, so, would you support the idea of gun purchases requiring also liability insurance at the time of purchase?
That's not very insurance.
The guy behind the gun.
The violence, it doesn't prevent the violence, because the people that are going to do it are going to pay attention to the law, they're law-abiding citizens.
They will then be subject to, they will be subject to.
They're not the people you got to worry about. The law-abiding people aren't the people that are committing the crimes.
And that, I think, and that's an issue that I think is relevant to the conversation.
The, the people, we represent a very diverse district.
Yep. Tell me about it.
And the gun owners that I come across in the district are truly, the ones I find, truly responsible, following the rules, doing, doing what is asked of them to do, so to speak. The people that don't follow the rules are the ones that get their hands on the weapons and the bad guys that are really, I think, the heart of the issue. And, and so how do we identify that? How do we get to that? That's what I'm interested in, input on. Background checks, maybe that's something to consider.
How about technology, a chip in each gun so it's only the owner who fires the gun?
Yes, yes, that. Those are some, using technology to, to make it safer.
I still don't understand why you need assault weapons for anything. Certainly, the Second Amendment wasn't written with assault weapons in mind. You can kill an awful lot of people quickly with an assault weapon.
When the Second Amendment was written, a musket was an assault weapon. Assault weapon is a name given to something to make it look worse than it is.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's a better weapon than the British were.
We have a.
Get an education in this area, people.
New voice, new voice here, let's go here, and then we'll write to you. He's in uniform. He's not going to go.
I just want to let you know, you and your staff, that I've got a letter, a lengthy letter that's been signed by over 1,100 Green Berets and Special Operations Forces, to include Air Force Commandos and Navy SEALs, that's been sent to the President of the
It's been sent to the President of the United States and to every member of Congress. I just wanted to make sure that our stand on the Second Amendment, you have a hard copy of that letter, sir.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
New York's law state ban is unconstitutional, basically.
Protecting the Second Amendment, now, sir, new input.
Yes, it is.
I, I'd like to go back to Newtown for a moment and, and ask, this was a question that I handed in. What can you think of that would have prevented Newtown, because it's gonna happen again? The tail of the statistics path says that Adam Lanza is out there and multiple, multiple individuals, and it's gonna happen again, unless, unless what? Now, it seems to me it's obvious that you're not gonna find all the psychopaths, you're not gonna find all the Adam Lanzas. The only thing you can do is prevent Adam Lanza from getting his hands on a AR-15 rifle. Under the Second Amendment, even, even Scalia said that, that under the Second Amendment and the right of protection, the government has the constitutional right to regulate types of firearms.
That's correct.
No, it does not.
Now, let's take it down, because this is, this is good, this is an input. The concern I would have, you've come to the conclusion that somehow banning the rifle will make sure that the rifle isn't there. Or AK, AK, whatever the, you name it, AK-50, whatever you wanna call it. That assault rifle, banning that assault rifle, what in government, if you, if you have concluded that government can't identify every psychopath that is out there amongst us in the three hundred million plus Americans that are there, what in the government leads you to believe that they're gonna be able to find the, how many guns are in circulation?
Two hundred and seventy million.
Two hundred and seventy million?
Thirty-nine.
How are we gonna find those and, and take those down?
That is a problem, we should be able to find them. That is a problem in and of itself.
The AR-15 rifle is a marvelous weapon. It has, it has the, it was designed to kill as many people in as quick a time as possible, and it is an identifiable weapon that has no place in the public arena.
So is fertilizer. Timothy McVeigh did not use a firearm in Oklahoma City. Fertilizer is still available, so is diesel fuel, so is rental trucks.
Killed a lot more people quicker, too.
I'm trying to address is, I think we can identify those individuals, those psychopaths, and I think we have to do a much better job at doing that.
Is Lanza's mother a psychopath? Because that's where he got the weapon from.
Well, I think, I think that young man, and I don't use his name, because I don't like to use his name, and I'll never give him any airtime whatsoever, but that young man clearly had a mental state that was deranged. And that young man, I am confident, and I haven't done it, and I'll do it to make sure that the next time I come, I can say I did it. But if we research his history, I am sure there are red flags that were missed by his teachers, by his parents, by his peers, that if we empower them to say, you know what? We can call out this deranged individual in school and say, he's got a problem. Right now, I've heard from superintendents, I've heard from administrators, I've heard from teachers across the district since this has happened, they said, you know what one of the big issues is? I'm afraid to report a student in my school, because next thing I know, I'm getting sued, I'm getting brought down to the superintendent's office, and I'm facing a potential lawsuit, because I called little Tommy, because Betty Reed, his mother, came in and said, there's no way you can call Tommy Reed crazy or a lunatic. That has to change, that has to change, and I think that is the conversation that we need to have as we have this conversation.
The person didn't even use his own guns, he used someone else's guns to do it, so that wouldn't have helped at all.
If we had gotten that guy to help, if we had gotten that guy to work, if we, and that's the point, that's exactly my point. She tried to get some help, and then he fell through the cracks and did what he did. And that's where I'm trying to, that's where I'm very interested.
Okay, Congressman Reed, may I please ask my question on this, right to what you said?
Okay.
It's two-part. It, it seems to me that there is no solution that's gonna eliminate gun violence. But it seems to me there are many solutions that will reduce gun violence. You have chosen to ignore some of them in favor of the mental health thing. Now, I have been told that their legislation was passed in Congress, perhaps not in your section, that forbids Congress from providing money for research into the connection between mental health problems and gun violence. There's specific legislation that prevents that. Since you have chosen to select out maybe one or two avenues to pursue instead of all of them, much to my regret, at least can you do something about reversing this mental health?
No, I'm very, that is news to me, that's why we love doing town halls.
So do it.
Because I wanna talk to you about what that provision is, and anybody, it sounds like other people know what that provision is.
You wanna know what that provision is? It shouldn't be news to you, that's an admission that you don't know what the hell's going on.
I will be the first one, if you want a standard elected politician, my predecessor would be a guy who said, I know everything in the damn code, and I've read it, I've read the whole thing twenty times and I know every provision of it. That has gotten us into the problems that we've gotten into in America. I am doing, I've been there two years, I am there, I work, we work a lot of hours, because I believe in what we're doing, and we are gonna continue to do the research. But I'll be the first one to tell you, do I know every nook and cranny of the United States code? Do I know every nook and cranny of the seventy thousand pages of the IRS tax code? No, I don't. That's why I'm here today, to listen to people who do have that information. And I promise you that I will follow up on that, and I will do the research. And if that is the law of the land, then I'm very interested in standing and getting that taken off the books. So hopefully, we can talk to a little bit of that.
In the interest of time, and we do have a variety of other topics, I do wanna try and work our way through some of the, some of them, so we can, everybody gets a chance to have some of their issues heard. This is one that sort of affects locally, but it's, we've had similar issues in the old district. What Craig asks, with the discovery of hydrilla now in Western New York, following the infestation in Tompkins County, is there any way to bring more federal dollars to the table to combat this invasive plant before it reaches the great light?
The hydrilla. Where of it? Know it's down in the, down in the, in the canal?
It's in here, we can't.
Yeah, and it's invasive, and I've watched the zebra mussels growing up here, lived here all my life, watched these invasive species come in. This is a priority, as we deal with the national debt crisis, as I was saying, it's a priorities question, to me, this is a priority. We're also dealing with it over in Chautauqua, that's why I like the district. You know, we were talking, we were kinda joking, it's a diverse district, but in a lot of ways, it's the same district. Because what they're facing in Chautauqua Lake is very similar as to what we're facing in the Finger Lakes. And so we can work together to try to get as much money, resources, technology deployed to take care of those common issues. So we're very interested in supporting additional resources to take care of that invasive species. Because I see the danger in it, I see the, the impact on the economic activity that it can cause. I'm watching Chautauqua Lake, was there when they had an algae bloom that was mind boggling, and pushed people away from the lake that caused significant turmoil. Very interested in supporting those, and we've done things like Emerald Ashmore teamed up on a bipartisan basis, worked with Kathy Hochul and Brian Higgins to try to identify that. We were getting some additional resources for that, and we were actually successful.
We were able to divert funds that were going to go to the bureaucracy, put them out in the field, so it was revenue neutral, but yeah, the funds were actually going to Saudi Arabia.
And that is a common principle that I try to bring to the table. A lot of this money that we're uncovering as we go through the budget goes to the DC bureaucracy and the administrative lines. I wanna get that money out to the field. And this was a, the Emerald Ashmore amendment was a classic example of us trying to do that. Also, the other ones are the Asian carp. I worked with guys like Bob Dole out of Illinois and the people coming up from Mississippi River. That is a dangerous invasive species that's coming down. We have a great resource right in our backyard with Cornell University, we have worked with them, we were at Farm Days, met with the director, had some great presentations as to what's going on in that area. So this is an area I think we can join hands and come together.
I'm sorry, I have to jump back to something that you said before that really stood out to me regarding gun control, because I really agreed with you. I'm probably the most liberal person I know who still tries to keep an open mind about what Republicans have to say. Thank you, I'm speaking. So you mentioned about empowering mental health counselors and empowering teachers, so my question is, what are you going to do about your party? Your party, your party spent most of the last four years eviscerating teachers and educators, you didn't go after the bankers. You annihilated teachers for being lazy and not caring about students, and in fact, that went on quite regularly until they started jumping in front of bullets to protect the kids you all said they didn't care about. Really, so, so as you talk about, I see these charts and you talk about all this stuff we're supposed to do. We've defunded mental health by billions, we've defunded schools significantly. Of course, we're asking for all these other things, you all won't give us the money to do what we know works.
On the issue, the national branding and the politics of it blow my mind. But I can assure you, I can speak for myself, and I'll speak for many members of our conference, teachers are a critical part of our nation, and we're gonna stand with them. And that is why this debt crisis, people ask me, why do you always talk about the debt crisis? Because it's, it's jeopardizing those essential and critical functions, such as teaching, such as our schools, and it's not just at the federal level, it's going all the way down to the state and local level. And we have to get this under control, because it's not a question of pulling money from one and giving to another, it's a question of, there's no money, and then we have to figure it out.
Then quit spending it.
Why did Republicans become experts on debt? I was one of those liberals in the streets yelling when you were finding hundreds of billions to give to the banks and for the wars, suddenly, there's no money. So how did that flip happen, were you experts on financial management?
Yeah, well, no, what I think has happened is there's a lot of us, no, I'm a freshman, I remember now, but I was part of that freshman class that went to Washington. Tell you, it's a different mindset, I go to, I had conversations with people on the floor, I'm like, are you kidding me? They're worried about, and it was clear to me, they were worried, it's on our side of the aisle. They were worried about their own tail getting reelected because they loved the wine and dine and the title. That's not what pushes, that's not what puts us there. That's not what gets me up to drive down every week and come back every weekend, back to my family in the morning. They're to try to do something, and there's so many other members, and that's where a lot of people, you read the USA Today report maybe, talking about the most inexperienced Congress, and they were trying to say that's a bad thing? I look at that as a good thing, because the system, the culture of DC is changing. And I've talked to people that were twenty, thirty-year lobbyists, that were coming up, they're like, I don't know how to deal with you. It used to be I'd come in and I would say, hey, well, you gotta support this bill, because then we can go on the front page of paper, cut the ribbon, and then you have all this headline, positive headline, you get reelected and everybody's happy. We don't operate that way. We ask the questions, where's the dollar going? What's the return on the investment? And how does this comply with our belief structure as to what the federal government should be doing, what the state government should be doing else? So why it switched? Why, why Republicans felt that way years ago? Elected officials, both sides, played that game, that era is gone, and especially in the House of Representatives. And we gotta continue to clean house, so to speak.
We have a, trying to get through as many as we can before we do have to leave. We've had several on sort of this general topic, which we sort of touched on, but a little more explicit. With the new district, you now have new constituents, including everybody in here. How will you adjust your policies to represent your new district?
Well, that's a new trend. Well, first, there will be a lot of, I'm gonna continue to keep coming, keep listening, adjusting policies? I don't know if that's the right term. What, what I would say is, where is there common ground? Hydrilla, just recently, that is a common ground we can work, work towards. And to say that elected officials should change who they are because of a new district, that's part of that old school mentality, in my opinion. But what I think you'll see in me is I'm practical, I try to be reasonable, I'm looking for solutions to problems. And where we can agree, I'm all in. And where we can join hands on the Violence Against Women Act, I'm all in. And that's what we'll continue to do.
But you're representing us on the Marcellus Shale, too.
Yes.
You need to represent the voices that sent you to office, don't you?
Even the ones that didn't vote for you.
And the man who's very concerned that are expressed on Marcellus Shale, making sure that the environment is not wrong? I think that we share that concern. But just as many people, again, it was a vote, there's a lot of people that, I didn't hide our position on natural gas. I mean, it was pretty well embedded across the district and across this area also.
Actually, you demonstrated real concern about the protections and getting it right and being safe. That would be the common ground, probably, that we ask.
And that we'll, we'll continue.
And you should know what our Department of Health, head of Department of Health, Eric Shaw, thinks about public health. He doesn't think food has anything to do with public health. This guy, I don't know how he's an M.D., I mean, we understand, medical doctors don't understand nutrition very well, but to say that food has nothing to do with public health, which he stated in front of the Assembly of Senate people just two, a couple days ago.
I wanna go to a different place.
Okay, okay.
So you're talking about spending money and how we need to watch every dollar and your return on investment. So I'm curious to know what you think about the House's decision to continue spending money to defend the Defense of Marriage Act. When the administration has said that the Department of Justice will not do that, the Boehner decided that the House would continue to foot that bill, and they're spending, I don't know how much money, but a lot of money, my tax money, to discriminate against me.
The president, taking the position, he's not going to enforce the law. Like it or hate it, it is the law. It hasn't been overturned, and it is the law.
That wasn't exactly his position, his position was that he was not going to defend it, and it is being, it is being enforced, and that law still is enforced, and the administration is enforcing that. What he did was, he did, he said that he would not defend it in court, that's all he said.
And for a president, and this is where we've had a lot of conversations over the last two years amongst different members, different senators, is for a president, remember, if the president can do that in that situation, he's not gonna, he's not gonna defend in the proceedings, or he's not gonna, whatever you describe it. He may, the next president, he's not gonna be president forever, and the next president may take the position, well, I'm not gonna, the Congress passed the law, but I'm not gonna use it when I have to defend it in the court of law. It's an institutional question that gets back to the Constitution, and it gets back into the separation of powers, and how much power the president has. So there's been some serious objections, and I was one of them, that have raised the objection of the president in doing that, because regardless if you like the law or not, it is the law, Mr. President, and you took an oath to execute and defend the law. And so, when you go down that path, I just, I would be very cautious that once that power is established, that power will be utilized by the next president, and you may not agree with that president. So we have to be very clear about it.
You have to shout out. Chautauqua firearms and drug thing, and you do the same thing, and I'm frankly, and I don't mean to interrupt, I am stunned and appalled that you're attacking the president for doing exactly what your Congress has been doing in choosing not to fund things. It's the same weapon you exercise, and you can't have it both ways, so at least be honest.
That's a great observation, and that's where the battle goes back and forth between the...
So don't attack Obama when you're doing it yourself.
And we're exerting our authority using what's available to us. And that's where the debate is not gonna be settled in the next four years, but it's, I'm trying to illustrate the debate.
Just, just, just take care of your own house and pay your own bills, and fund your own agencies. At least it's not, you know, when you're not, not funding certain agencies, starving them for money, that we and your imprettations have passed laws, I mean, at least take responsibility. And we know you use that as a weapon, because you have the power of the purse.
What about the president using some executive orders?
We are, we're hitting the end of our time, we're gonna get a couple in, and we're gonna have to move, actually, to Seneca Falls.
And again, one will want to join us.
What is your position on keeping Social Security from discussions regarding the federal budget? So, hands off Social Security or not?
This needs to be part of the conversation. I've been getting a tone or a lot of input, especially at the recent town halls today, and I've been getting it over the last month, that somehow Social Security can't be part of the conversation when it comes to the debt crisis.
It's not part of the problem.
Okay, let's, all right, let's get into that, let's get into that, because we can either, we can either say, we're not gonna talk about it, and we're just gonna put it aside, but the reality of the situation is, Democrat, Republican, elected officials of years gone by, and I'm, I don't engage in the blame, those debates go on forever down in Washington, and I walk away from it. But on Social Security, on the Social Security issues. And so what we have to look at is, Social Security, the money has been borrowed from, it is upside down, and the money has been spent. And who did that? See, that's the, that's the debate that most often gets raised right now in this conversation, and then we spend an hour saying it was Reagan, it was Bush, it was Clinton, it was this. So, so... Yes, and whoever did what? Whoever did what? The lockbox, Al Gore lockbox, whoever did what? The reality, this is why it has to be part of the conversation, because with a sixteen trillion, potentially twenty trillion dollar national debt, if these obligations, we're so far in debt, we don't have the money to pay those obligations back... so far in debt, we don't have the money to pay those obligations back to Social Security, what happens? Social Security collapsed. And it collapses at a point when people are relying on the Social Security checks, and you can't have that happen. We can't let that happen.
So just raise the cap so that the Koch Brothers and George Soros pay the same as all of us here. That's all you have to do.
Now, when we take off the caps, I also, what do you do with the benefit?
You leave.
Okay, so Koch Brothers making $100 million, they contribute to Social Security, you pay the payroll tax out of the Social Security. What do you think the Koch Brothers get calculated as to a benefit?
What do they get now?
They get a huge liability that's created to Social Security because of the benefit calculation, because they're contributing more, they have to pay out more to the Koch Brothers. So, so, there you go. There you go. Now, this is part of a solution to the problem. You remove the cap. When you remove the cap, you got to also take care of the benefit calculation.
Social Security--
For the people that are paying at the higher level.
Social Security is an insurance program. If you kill Social Security, then we have seniors eating cat food again.
And that's, we don't want to, I'm not going to be part of policy that builds Social Security. Let's just be clear, of removing the caps. People say that's such a simple, remove the caps and it takes care of it. It doesn't, unless you cap the benefit, the ceiling suggestion that you can--
I think--
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, so do that on that side. So, that's, there's a cap on it because of the 106, that's where you have to go.
Why in all your tax reform haven't you considered a flat rate tax, which would solve all the problems?
Well, let's stay on Social Security. So--
I have a Social Security question.
Okay.
So, as a citizen in New York State, I have the legal right now to marry who I love. I'm entitled to legal protections under the law like Social Security survivors' benefits. But the law of DOMA prevents me, if my wife should die, from collecting her Social Security while your wife gets her Social Security. What is right, just, and fair about that? And our soldiers are being killed, and their wives or children are not going with their Social Security. So tell me what's so right and just about that, and if you think that's not right and just, what are you going to do to prevent that from continuing to happen every day?
This is, I am aware of this problem. And it's a problem that has to get rectified.
You're spending $3 million of taxpayer money, some funded by gay individuals who are legally married in this state and others. You are standing in their way intentionally.
And this goes right back to the Constitution, the federal government recognizing the states and the states' decisions of allowing gay marriage, for example, in this situation. What is, how can the federal government ignore?
It is marriage equality, Congressman.
Marriage equality.
Thank you.
Marriage equality. So how does the federal government recognize that one state allows, one state doesn't? And that is a, that is a question we're wrestling with right now. And there's been some people in the office that have different proposals that we're weighing as we speak, to see how can we rectify that. Recognize the states--
You are willing to rectify it?
I am willing, yeah, I'm willing to look at the different proposals. Because if it's recognized in New York State, how do you deal, how does that impact other states that don't recognize it? And so that has to be, that, I haven't been able to finalize.
Congressman Hanna has come out and said, of course, this has stood in the way of the Republican Party. We lost the election because of this reason, one of them. And he has come out in favor of marriage equality across the books and does not support DOMA. He actually supports the repeal. Would you now say, "I'm going to cosponsor this"? Yes or no, sir?
Undecided.
Yes or no, sir?
Undecided.
Undecided.
I know, listen, listen, because we're still dealing with the issue. And we're still dealing with the states' rights and the constitutionality of the issue that we're dealing with. And, and so, let's just, you know, you know what bugs me the most about what Richard said about it? He couched it in a political term. He couched it in a political term. He says, "We lost the election, so therefore we should change our position on these issues."
And that's what John McCain said about immigration?
And you know, that's, we need to think about these things. And I think you're going to find, and we're going to continue to talk, that's why I have people in, coming up with proposals and a way to rectify this, to recognize, one state has the right not to recognize it, and one state has recognized it. And so how do you, how do you reconcile those two? And we want to, and we want to do that, and find a solution to it.
I'll be calling your office for an appointment.
We have time for two more questions. We are a little bit over, but I want to get a couple more in before we--
Social Security on a large scale, what was the plan that you were about to--
Yeah, because, because we got, we got, when we take the cap off and we change the benefit, God bless you, recognize what you've done with Social Security. Because what you've done is you have had the general fund then pick up Social Security tax when you go down that path. And I'm concerned that where you're going to put Social Security is into the general fund, and it just becomes another social welfare program. Social Security is unique. Social Security was designed to be unique. And I want to make sure that Social Security is that separate program, other than just being covered by the general revenues. There are some people, and I know, but some people to reform it, to save it, some people, some--
But you are misrepresenting it. Let him finish, will you?
I recognize that it is a separate program. Some people are talking in order to save it, just make it part of the general fund and bail it out. I don't want to go down that path. I don't think we should go down that path.
Martha suggested that you remove the cap. She didn't suggest this other thing.
And that's where if you go down and remove, that's where you could end up where it just becomes part of the general fund. So that's where--
No, why?
What's that?
Caps the benefit.
Cap the benefit.
Benefits are capped right now.
And the people, and the people that are contributing to it--
You make the adjustment, you make the, the problem you raised can be worked with and adjusted, and you know it.
And if you do that, okay, so the people that are contributing to it, they're not going to get the benefit that they're--
Most of them will. It's like taxing the rich. It's the same principle.
It's designed to be a very progressive program.
So just make it work.
That's how it's designed.
In addition, one third goes to disabled people. Most people don't know this. One third of Social Security goes to people who are prematurely disabled before age 62 or 65 or whatever. That's where one third goes.
And that is true. And then that begs the question, is that, what is that doing to the overall solvency of Social Security? And have they actuarially, have they actuarially set it up to take care of that liability? And that's a question that's out there.
All right, we literally are running out of time, so just want like two more. Victor says, "A majority, majority of Americans, including Republicans, support an amendment to the Constitution or to the Citizens United decision that allowed corporate money." Corporations spend money that they still can't give directly to campaigns, but corporations spend money unlimited. Why don't you?
Because I believe in the freedom. I believe in the freedom of, these are individuals' money, these are, this is money that can be contributed. And if you're going to go down this path, then we want labor unions to be banned. We want all organizations, all nonprofits to be banned. If you're going to treat one, you got to treat each equally. There is an equal protection component of this issue. So, so, just as we go down this path, a lot of people don't want to go down to the second part of the conversation. If you're going to ban it for one, you need to ban it for all, because--
Last, last question. Andrew asks, "Any plans for Tompkins County District Office?"
Yes, yes. Thank you, Andy. Now, we've been hearing a lot of people want, we are facing, because we are part of these cuts that we're talking about, we are facing a 10% cut in our budget, which I wholeheartedly support. And we're asking other people to cut. In our House budgets, in our House accounts, we need to be cut, too. So I'm--
We have one fund that funds our staff salaries, our district office rent.
It's about $3 million now?
It's less than that.
It's about 1.2.
It's just over a million.
Put a 10 in Whit Park, get everyone else to.
Mark and I will camp out together. So, we're facing that budgetary cut. We've had some ideas. We are looking at some. We've had some conversations. But we have made a commitment, and I've told the guys, "Let's find a place, let's have a presence here in Ithaca." We have a large district, so we have Jamestown office, we have a Corning office, we have a Geneva office, and a Wego office, and only an office, and an Ithaca office. I am hopeful that presence will cover the district. I know it can't cover every town. We would love to be in every village. We'd love to be in every, every community across the district, but just practically--
We have over 190 towns.
So, so that's what we're going to do. And then, so, once we, and we'll have like an open house type of public event to incorporate people.
We don't know what--
Sir, let's wrap up real quick, sir, right here.
No, stealing. Even though you're stealing, I'm--
When Social Security was initially enacted, that the government was not allowed to put their hands on it. Why are they doing it?
They weren't until 67 when Johnson--
If they had them on it, we wouldn't have, I could stand up here and say exactly, "Take it away." It would be taken care of. It would have been solved. The point is, they did reach into it, they did touch it, they did do all the evil things. And we have, that's why it has to be part of this conversation in order to save it, so that people are not in the situation where it collapses when they rely on it.
We understand that those of us 15 and over will be covered. What about my son?
I'm over 50. I'd like to opt out.
Just one more thing. I have a baby born. I can tell from all of the gray hair and the things here, too. And I'd like people to walk away from here and really think about something. And this goes back to our freedoms and everything. But growing up in the 50s, I remember seeing the advertisements. And it was right after the World War II, and all these different guns that were out available, M1 carbines, M1 Garands, you could use, back then, before the President got shot, you could order them right, right through the mail. Okay? So now, I'm asking, if there wasn't such a big outcry, there wasn't all this violence, and kids going to the schools and shooting innocent kids up and everything like that. I mean, if you had a fight in school, it was back on the parking lot, you nuked it out a little bit, and then pretty soon you shook hands and you went and played baseball together. Something has happened. We've got to go back to the future or something. We can't keep up with this violence, because you can't watch out for everyone, not. Okay? Something's got to be done. What happened in the meantime? We've got more violent movies? Okay, maybe you and I, and us adults, can go to a violent movie, and we can walk back home and have our coffee and go to bed or whatever. Violent video games, you get this violent rap music that denigrates women and wants cocks being killed, kill the pigs, and the violent video games.
Wars.
And what is going on? I mean, you looked at that kid there, they shot all those poor kids. He looked like some sort of zombie. He's been there playing video games in his house. He's not out like we were, riding his bicycle to a ballgame. Something has gone wrong. We've got to go back and change things, because by putting a little, banning a little flash suppressor, or bayonet lug, or a pistol grip on a rifle isn't going to do anything. We're going to have more of this. That's all I got to say.
We had so many questions, and a lot of them want, just, thank you, thank you. You're just the car. So if people, without the name, a simple follow-up, if people want to ask specific questions, the easiest way to do it is to go to reed.house.gov. Hold on, hold on. Reed.house.gov has an email function. You can email directly into the Congressman. It also has the phone numbers, the fax numbers, and the addresses for all our offices. That's the easiest way, in case you got a question or you didn't put your name or your email address or something on, to get a response.